Calling to order the Monday, March 19th, 2012, regular meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Here.
Blanchard?
Here.
Kadecel?
Here.
Brad Onson?
Here.
Stedman?
Here.
Terbrack?
Here.
O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, to approve.
It has been moved by Councilmember Kadecel, support from Mayor Pro Tem Terbrack. Is there -- are there any changes? Very good. Hearing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadecel?
Yes.
Brad Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the invocation with Dick and Brian Carroll with us this evening. Please stand.
Today, the 19th of February, in the high churches, Catholics, Episcopal, is the feast of Saint Joseph, who was the foster father and guardian of Jesus of Nazareth. The tradition says that he was a carpenter. However, the Greek word was used for him as technikos. I guess these days we'd say he was a skilled tradesman, solidly middle-class man, a man pursued by herod and the other evil people of his time, perhaps a good patron for the middle class of our own time, who are under a certain amount of stress at the moment. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for all the good gifts you give us. We thank you for this glorious spring day. We thank you for this country in which we live and for the freedoms which we enjoy. We ask you to help us this evening, be attentive to your spirit that dwells within us and between us, so that what we may discuss here and enact may be for the building up of the common good. We ask this in God, your great name. Amen.
Now, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda tonight is Citizens' Comments. When you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on the agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on a sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you today. I wanted to let everyone know about this coming up Saturday, the March 24th of Berkeley Hockey Day. Here is a flyer for it. And this is actually, I'm hoping that would be called our first annual Mayor's Cup, okay? What that is, is a funful day for people of our community to enjoy hockey, kind of the fun that it can be and how fun it can be to watch and how fun it can be to play. Really, what we're going to start out doing on the 24th is, our schedule for the day, if you take a look at this, is at 10 o'clock, we're going to have a little game between seven, eight, and nine-year-olds. They're going to have, they're going to demonstrate that game. At 11 o'clock, this is going to be really fun for a lot of people. It's a free learn-to-skate and hockey skills. And this is for anybody that wants to kind of learn how to skate or anything that they want to do. I mean, I'm 41, it's hard to believe, I never really played hockey growing up. I was a basketball player, I'm six foot seven. And, you know, it's a long way down for me. So, getting these huge skates on, you know, I'm very, you know, and see these little kids doing by me. Well, I'm even going to get out in skates to go out there as well. But it's actually going to be fun for all of our kids, no matter what age they are, adult, no matter what age they are. If they want to put some skates on, we'll have members of the Berkeley High School hockey team coming out and actually help us, help those newbies actually learn how to skate. And also for the people, the kids that are a little bit more advanced, maybe it's at the other end of the arena, actually has some hockey skills. Okay? At 12:30, we're going to have a skills competition with some of our nine- and 10-year-olds, where they get to, you know, shoot on the goalie, you know, see who can race around the track, the fastest rink, excuse me. And those kind of competitions, things that the community likes to see. Every time I've ever seen this event, it's always packed in there, ready for people to watch. But the big one, the big part is going to actually start at 2 o'clock with the Mayor's Cup. And that is the first time that the two middle schools in Berkeley Heights have ever faced each other. They face each other in all the sports every year, like basketball, you know, I can't think of any, all the different ones. I know that because all my kids go to those events, like we're playing Nora, we're playing Anderson. But this is the first time. What we had about a month ago, we started taking names down, well, actually about a couple of weeks ago, and we have close to 50 children, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, about 25 or 26 from Nora and 24 from Anderson. And we're ready to have a hockey game between the two of them, actually two hockey games. One with a combination of sixth and seventh graders and the other one, seventh and eighth graders. And just that was enough. I mean, I just remember talking to some people, saying, hey, let's have this hockey game. And everyone's eyes just lit up, like, let's have this. Everybody's volunteering, doing this. Been actually a really cool experience for all these people to volunteer, step up and do a lot of things. So, that is for the community. It starts at 2 o'clock and 3:30. We will have a donation at the door if you wish, but it's basically a fun time for everyone to come to the community and see our kids play, or play yourself. That's, it's all up to you guys. And anything that we happen to make that day will go directly to the ice arena, okay? And then there'll be a little bit of a break, but at 7 o'clock, there's an open skate. That's $5 right there. And I'm hoping to get a lot of the hockey players to come back out there with their jerseys and have a little fun with that as well. I would like to thank some of our local businesses, like the Butterfly Bakery Shop. They donated $250 to help feed the kids after the game, which was very nice of them. We have Proneys Hockey Store that donated a lot of the money toward the jerseys. That was very nice of them as well. I'd also like to say a lot of thanks go out to the Berkeley Parks and Rec Department, Tom Caldwell, and everybody's been very, very, being, every time I had an idea, they'd say, yeah, let's go for it, getting the trophies, getting, getting everything like that. DYJ, they helped in the sense that we had so many conflicts on that day that, you know, only some of the kids can make this time because maybe there was, there's championship weekend over Royal Oak. It's mainly in the morning, early afternoon. Well, we, those kids spent their whole year on those teams. We don't want to take them away from that experience or, so we moved those games into the late afternoon, that maybe make it easy for those kids to actually do both events. And so I thank them for that. The high school hockey team's been great. They've obviously donated the use of their, they're coming to help us, ref, coach the game, everything like that. And the school district has been very wonderful at getting the information out to everybody. And it's just been a really cool experience so far to see everyone work well together. It's been really a pleasure to do that. And, Tom, can we say what the names of those trophies are, real quick?
No, we're on.
Okay. One is the Berkeley Bear Cup, right?
The bear.
The Bear Cup. And the idea with the cups is the winning school gets to keep that trophy for a year, just like this, like the Stanley Cup thing, kind of cool. And the other one has to do with the first mayor of Berkeley presiding over it, it's called the O'Dwyer Cup. So, that was not his idea, by the way. But I figured that since, you know, the first mayor, you should be, one should be named after him, okay? And thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, John, and thank you to Parks and Rec and all the volunteers who are making this, what promises to be a most enjoyable day. So we thank you. Anybody else? Very good. Well, the next order of business is the Consent Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Sorry.
Oh.
Representative.
Hold on. We are joined by our State Rep, Ellen Cogan Lipton, and we will keep the comments section open so that our State Rep can address us. Thank you for being here with us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to give you a little bit of an update of what's happening in Lansing, particularly in terms of what's happening in the budget. I'll be very brief, just sort of hitting the high points, but wanted to come and sort of give you the lay of the land in terms of where things are at right now. The governor delivered his executive recommendation last month, which is sort of the kickoff of the budget process, which will go probably through the spring. And the administration has notified the Appropriations Committee that he would like the budget done by May 1st this year. That's about a month earlier than the budget was done last year, but we are on target to, to, to meet that at this point. The subcommittees are starting to meet. I serve on the General Government Subcommittee of the Full Appropriations Committee, in addition to K-12 and community colleges. But for purposes of tonight, I want to focus on the General Government Subcommittee, which is the line item of the larger budget that deals, of course, with revenue sharing for cities, villages, and townships. The lion's share of General Government, the lion's share of the General Government line item is dealing with revenue sharing. The governor's, the good news is that the governor's executive recommendation is, we're seeing a continuation of the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, which began in last year's budget. That will continue with the boilerplate language, expecting to be a slight modification of what we saw last year. Last year, the requirement for the incentive revenue sharing pot of money, that was the set aside, we'll see that again in this budget. And with some added language, most likely asking the local units to show not only the plan of shared services and consolidation, but the next step being how that might be implemented. That's the expectation, at least, in the expected boilerplate. We expect also to see a slight, a slight increase in the amount of line item appropriated for that Economic Vitality Incentive Program line item. We're expecting something perhaps on the order of 1% to 2%. So certainly not to the extent that our local units have been cut. We're not, I'm not expecting to see a full restoration, but we're not expecting to see any, any cuts. The increase will be extremely modest, but at least it's in the positive direction. The biggest significance that we're going to see in the revenue sharing portion of the line item is in the counties. This will have some effect, I think, on local units of government because it's going to ask counties to now also make a showing in order to get their revenue share, their county revenue sharing dollars, which are, for the county is all statutory, as opposed to constitutional, that they are now going to be asked to be brought into the EVIP criteria. The counties are, we've had extensive testimony so far. The counties don't want to be part of the EVIP program, and we're not exactly sure how that is going to shake out, but I'm expecting that probably the counties are not going to be on the winning end of that argument, if I had a crystal ball, which I don't, but that's my expectation. What we're seeing in the administration's budget is a continuation of fairly important policymaking being made through the budgeting process. That's something that this administration is doing in a number of budgets, and I think we're going to see a continuation of that in terms of setting, making drastic cuts, setting aside a pot of money, and then asking local units of government to incorporate policies that the administration would like to see as a reward for getting some of these dollars back. So, that's just a very brief overview. There's going to be some additional monies put into the state police budget, which will go directly to Pontiac and Detroit, not directly, not directly affecting Berkeley, but certainly as a sandwich community between Pontiac and Detroit geographically, there is going to be some additional public safety, particularly in the state police line item, to deal with some of the enhanced crime that we're seeing in those two communities. If there are any questions, happy to answer them, or if, as the budget process is working its way through the legislature, please contact me, call me, email me, send me a smoke signal, whatever is your pleasure, and I will, if I don't know the answer off the top of my head, I will find it out for you. So...
Are there any questions for our State Representative? Well, I don't know what that means, that there are no questions, Ellen. It may be that we have grown weary of expecting funds coming from the state and grown accustomed to a decline in the revenues coming our way.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not, it's not, it has not been, it has not been a positive, it has not been a positive trend. And I wish I could say that the state's policies will, would reflect all of the work that cities, villages, and townships have been forced to take on. The only good thing I can say is that, at least as to statutory revenue sharing, there's not going to be substantial cuts. There may be a little bit more, but again, the EVIP line item was, didn't, last budget did not fully reflect the cuts that, that the executive recommendation extracted. It was, it was truly a very small percent put back in, and cities were asked to be happy about it, and I don't, I don't, I don't think they should, but...
Okay. My question, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Your Honor, for coming out and sharing this information with us. I greatly appreciate you reaching out to us and for all that you do for us at Lansing. Two quick questions, curious about, first, and I think you may have hinted at this already, the tone or the tenor, as you see it in Lansing. So how does the atmosphere feel? Is there any opportunities for working together? And the other question was, if you could lightly touch on any, any about funding with the school systems. I know that that's primarily for another audience, but there's a lot of folks that interest both in the municipal side and the education component. So if you could touch on the, the tone or the tenor there, and then also just a little bit on the education, thank you.
You bet, you bet. Let me take the second piece first, okay? Because it's a good segue to the earlier comment about seeing fairly significant policy changes taking place in the budget. Is it that, this is sort of a radical departure. Typically speaking, appropriations bills were generally focused on the framework of the dollars. What we're finding in this particular administration is the use of the boilerplate component of the budget as a way of really drilling down into policy. And we're, for the first time, seeing that repeat in the K-12 budget, which is another Subcommittee that I sit on. So for example, what we're seeing now, as we know that the school aid fund had a pretty significant hit last budget cycle, about $470 per pupil cut with about $100 restored and a supplemental at the end of last budget cycle. So it's still a net negative, but what we're seeing for the first time in the K-12 budget is a best practices, EVIP kind of policy. So basically, a set aside of a pot of money, not fully restoring the cuts to school aid, and sort of asking the school districts to impose best practices as a means of applying for that, some of that money back. So what are some of these best practices? Sort of what we saw with EVIP in terms of hard caps on retirement, sort of cost containment things. One thing we are seeing is a little bit of money being put back into NIPsers as a way of stabilizing the, the teacher retirement system. But there is, there is a, there is a requirement that districts incorporate some of these best practices, à la what cities, villages, and townships had to do last year, as a condition to apply for what would amount to $100 per pupil. And quite frankly, because they were cut so drastically last year, they're, they're kind of desperate for even that. It's not fully restoring school funding, but we're seeing a lot of school districts look very hard at doing that because $100 per pupil is, it's something. So that's on the school aid piece, very similar to what we saw in general government. In terms of the overall tenor, what's interesting is that, that what I'm seeing this budget cycle, which I didn't see last budget cycle, is a little bit of pushback, particularly from the Senate. What we saw last budget was a willingness by the legislature to sort of jump, jump in full, you know, both feet with sort of the governor's agenda. And there wasn't a lot of legislative pushback from the budgeting standpoint, okay? What we're finding in this budget, even this early, is, you know, the governor just, just delivered his executive recommendation a month ago. Already, there are rumblings, particularly from the Senate, that this is not the budget that we intend to pass. I'll just give you an example with the film credits. Okay, $25 million for the film credits. Already, you have the Senate Majority Leader saying, that's not enough, I want $100 million. So there are certain fights that are being played out, not really in the media, but in some of the whisper circles in Lansing, which are suggesting that particularly the Senate are not necessarily going to be going along willingly with the governor's executive recommendation for the budget. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Representative, for being with us. You mentioned, you touched on the EVIP program a couple of times. For us, you know, we're getting close to the budget season. We had a work session last week talking about our budget issues that we need to work on for the future. And I know you said that it will still be here next year, and that's something that we have planned on, but do you get any sense from the governor? Is he happy with the EVIP program in its current state? Is it something that seems like it's going to be there for a while, or is it, well, I know they, you know, there was a lot of yelling last year, so we gave them, you know, the EVIP program, and we kept it in this year, but is it something that he's trying to work out slowly? Because it's hard for us to, you know, we can't just plan one year in advance. We've got to say, you know, a few years down the road.
Yep.
And for us, it's almost makes the most sense for us to not plan on any EVIP money being in our budget because there's just so much uncertainty around it.
Yeah, yeah. The, from my vantage point, okay, I think it's pretty safe to say that this governor is, is very much in favor of what he calls a performance-based budgeting, okay? We're seeing more of that in this executive recommendation, not less, okay? So the thought that whether or not EVIP is working or not, the notion that it is going to be done away with under this administration is next to zero, okay? Now, what, what the administration seems to be at least willing to listen to, and this is being brought up on both sides of the aisle, is to introduce an element of flexibility. In other words, last, in last budget, what we saw was the administration saying, okay, we're going to cut, we're going to restore some of that money back if you do A, B, and C. What, what, the pushback that we're, that we're, that I'm observing to the administration is, who came up with A, B, and C? And what best practice are you relying on to indicate that A, B, and C are your best practice, okay? And the administration, at least in some areas, has indicated a willingness to listen to local units. We just heard testimony from Kent County, basically saying, look, we have done things that you're not even aware of, that have cut our budget by 12%, and yet, they don't fall into your little box, okay? So are you really incentivizing, you know, good behavior? Or are you just rewarding a very, very narrow set of, of, you know, you know, narrow set of hoops that we have to jump through? In other words, what's the logic to your hoops? And the administration is, has indicated a willingness to listen to something on the order of allowing greater flexibility to meet these, this performance-based budgeting. But the notion that it will be done away with, I don't think that that's anything that anyone should be willing, I think it's here for, for the duration.
In some form, not necessarily the amounts, but...
Correct.
Something. As long as we keep jumping through the hoops we need to jump through.
Right. And it may very well be that, you know, you, you design the hoop, as long as you jump through something.
Okay.
And there is some discussion, or at least a willingness on the part of the administration to listen to that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So Mr. Sabuda needs to start coming up with some hoops for us to jump through, and jump through them for us. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And for a quick follow-up question, continuing that line of reasoning, and it's, the timing is fantastic that you're here tonight as we look to our city's future.
Our city's and all my, because this is, yeah.
It's that time, yeah, definitely. Building on the EVIP relative uncertainty, can you lightly comment on anything to do with the personal property tax? That's another item that, that we, as we look to what kinds of things can we forecast in this year and beyond? Any clarity on that might be helpful as we face some really difficult decisions here in the city.
Yep, I had that in my notes too, and I thank you for bringing that up.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, on personal property tax, if you remember the, the, coming out of the administration, at least, probably even as, you know, continuous as six months ago, there was a lot of discussion that that is going to be the next item on the agenda. And that really has a lot to do with, what we're finding out was sort of the negotiation in terms of the elimination of the MBT. Remember that that was something that the administration pushed very heavily? And what we learned later is that it was with the understanding, particularly through administrative, the administration having conversations with the Michigan Manufacturers' Association, that if you sort of stand down in terms of the MBT, elimination of the MBT, we will deal with what you want, which is the elimination of the personal property tax. So that was sort of the, the, what a lot of people are realizing, they're sort of standing down on the MBT issue, sort of then allowed them to say, okay, well, it's our turn now. Okay, so the, the issue of the elimination of the personal property tax has been on the table. However, the MML did a very, Michigan Municipal League, as well as a coalition of organizations that deal with library, you know, public funding of libraries and other, other things, did a very, very good job about three months ago of publishing information by county of exactly what the elimination of the personal property tax would do. And interestingly enough... And interestingly enough, one of the counties that will be hit the hardest by the elimination of the PPT is none other than Calhoun County. Now, that's important because Calhoun County is the county that the Speaker of the House, Speaker Bolger, represents. 28% in fact of Calhoun County's revenue would be decimated by the elimination of the PPT. So discussions about moving that legislation has quieted down very dramatically, okay? And the focus now is unless you can, unless the legislature and the administration can figure out a way to replace that, I don't see any discussion about eliminating the personal property tax. Now, what I've been telling people is, there's always lame duck, okay? So although I don't think you're going to see anything that eliminates the personal property tax without a replacement source through November, but there's always the danger that from November to December, so I'm telling people to be very vigilant on that issue, but keep in mind that the, the Speaker of the House, when you talk about, you know, his county being cut 20, 28%, he, he was not very enthusiastic about that particular, that particular effort on the part of the administration. Does that-
Yes, that certainly helps. It's, it's, it's always very sobering when we actually see the realities of some of the things that sound good on a, you know, in, in principle, but then when you actually look at how that it gets applied, it's a very different perspective.
The number is right.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It also reminds us of how precarious our situation is when it depends upon the Speaker of the House's own county. Were he from some other county, this may have sailed through-
Right.
-which is the uncertainty that has been reflected by some of the questions here.
Yep.
David, did you have a question?
Thank you, Your Honor, I do have one.
You bet.
Good evening, Madam Representative. Good to see you again. I just wanted, you didn't touch on constitutional sales-
Revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing?
Yep.
Is the governor's recommendation going to sail through, or is, are we in a battle there?
No, unconstitutional?
Hmm?
No, no. The good news about attaching constitutional to anything in the legislature, and maybe that's where it turns out it's a good thing, is that the notion of the legislature trying to do anything to interfere with that has generally been off the table. So, no, constitutional, I don't think, I'm relatively confident will remain untouched. And I don't think we're going to see any shifts to try to-
Good.
Uh-
Just the number?
Creatively count for that.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Well, if there aren't any other questions, then Representative Cogan Lipton, we thank you for representing us so well in Lansing.
You're welcome.
We are proud of the work you're doing on our behalf, and on behalf of the schools as well in our, in our area. The Berkeley School District also benefits greatly from your representation and your, your fight on their behalf for all our students in this community. So we thank you, and we thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you, and thanks to all of the work that you do. And please, if there's any questions along the way, I try to send information out, but please use me as a resource. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to try to get to one more city yet tonight, so please excuse my-
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your presence. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda, over the minutes, regular meeting of the 34th City Council on Monday, March 5, 2012, and work session meeting on Monday, March 12, 2012. Resolution Number R1612, matter of adopting a resolution recognizing Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi for being Community Service Award recipients by the Michigan Parks and Recreation Association. Resolution Number R1712, matter of adopting a resolution recognizing March 2012 as Parenting Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Are there any corrections, additions, changes? Hearing none. It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plattenson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Consent Agenda has been passed. Now we move on to the Regular Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read Item Number One on tonight's Regular Agenda?
Recognition Presentations, matter of any recognition or presentation from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. I have asked Mayor Protem Terbrak to read Resolution 1612.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cindy and Sue, if you guys want to step, step on up here to the microphone. Thank you. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi as Community Service Award recipients. Whereas 10 years ago, the city was faced with serious budget issues and subsidizing parks and recreation programming and special events was no longer a possibility. Whereas faced with this reality, in 2006, Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi approached the Parks and Recreation Department about bringing back one of our longtime special events, the Halloween Spooktacular Carnival, if the Berkeley Junior Women's Club would partner with the city and share the expense of the project. And whereas that October, the community center was alive with laughs, costumes, games, and fun, as children from the area threw rubber bats and rats, pitched rings around witch hats, and collected bags full of prizes and candy. And whereas the Halloween Spooktacular went so well that we teamed up the next spring to offer Breakfast with the Bunny to families in town. There were piles of smiles in the building as kids enjoyed the petting farm, pictures with the bunny, and breakfast with their families. And whereas before that day was over, Sue and Cindy were asked, were asking the city about running a daddy-daughter dance. Of course, the offer was taken up, and all three events are family favorites now in Berkeley. And whereas on March 14, 2012, at their Community Service Award Ceremony in East Lansing, the Michigan Parks and Recreation Association presented the Community Service Award to Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi for their outstanding support to public recreation and parks programs in the city of Berkeley. Now, therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi be recognized for their outstanding dedication and commitment to the families of the city of Berkeley. And be it further resolved that Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi, along with the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, helped Berkeley Parks and Recreation bring back family special events to our community. And be it finally resolved that the city of Berkeley sincerely thanks Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi for being volunteer heroes and for their tireless dedication and commitment to making the city of Berkeley a great place to live and raise a family. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, March 19, 2012, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Wow. We did, I guess she's going to say, sweet jazz.
We'd like to expressly thank members of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, we're both members of that group, and together we've really, really done a lot. So we've even had more ideas, so.
Yeah, we just constantly, and it's, we believe in Berkeley, we love Berkeley, our kids grew up in Berkeley, my husband grew up in Berkeley.
I grew up in Berkeley.
She, yes. And to hear all of that, that's very, very kind, it's kind words, we love the city.
And, and it is evident.
Yeah.
It is evident. Well, would you please come forward and receive the Community Service Award? Yours, Cindy?
This is yours as well, we'll put those together.
And Sue?
Thank you very much.
Sue? There you go. Congratulations. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks for everything.
Great job, you've done a great program.
Thanks.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Thank you, Cindy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I have asked Councilmember Kadekko to read Resolution 1712.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing March 2012 as Parenting Awareness in the city of Berkeley. Whereas March is Parenting Awareness Month in the state of Michigan, and whereas Parenting Awareness Month celebrates people who are raising children, and whereas Parenting Awareness Month seeks to draw public attention to the critical importance of parenting and helping children to become healthy, caring, and contributing citizens, and whereas Parenting Awareness Month seeks to promote education and resources for developing parenting skills throughout the year, and whereas Parenting Awareness Month encourages the development of local parent networks, and whereas Parenting Awareness Month encourages everyone to participate in the lives of all of our children, now therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves that March 12, uh, March 2012 is Parenting Awareness Month in the city of Berkeley. And be it further resolved that the city of Berkeley supports all efforts and resources, particularly local, that promote, encourage, support, and educate the community on parenting issues. And be it finally resolved that the city of Berkeley upholds a vision that every person, everywhere, every day, understands their responsibility in raising our children. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, March 19, 2012, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kadekko. Barbara Blanchard would now like to make some comments.
Barbara Blanchard, 1927, Edgewood in Berkeley. On behalf of PTA, I would like to thank you for recognizing March as Parenting Awareness Month. As you're probably aware, all of our public schools in Berkeley are part of PTA, Parent Teacher Organization, Association. And, oh, thank you, Eileen knows that. And with the PTA, they can go to the Michigan PTA and the National PTA for resources that help them support education, help them support parenting skills, and numerous ways to collaborate with the community. We have a wonderful brochure that we try to encourage all of our PTAs to use, and it's entitled, "100 Ways to Help Your Child and School Succeed." And very convenient for tonight, the one important part of it is collaborating with the community. And out of the 100 ways, 86 through 100 give our parents numerous ways to collaborate with the community. And just to highlight some of those, find out about and use information on community resources and organizations, help coordinate and participate in events that support community groups, recruit community members such as seniors or our business people to volunteer at school, work with local authorities and public officials to sponsor or participate in community events, encourage and facilitate your child's participation in community service. And many high schools are now requiring a certain number of hours of community service toward graduation. And maybe the most important one, be a role model. Be active in community service yourself or together with your child. So thank you so much for doing this, it's greatly appreciated, and I'm sure that, speaking for PTA and parents here in Berkeley, we do hope that there's community involvement that's stressed during this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Ms. Boucher, would you please read Item Number Two on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M1212, matter of appointing Denise Allard to the Woodward Dream Cruise Ad Hoc Committee as a citizen representative.
Is there a motion to approve M1211?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekko, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Ms. Allard personally called me a few weeks ago to express her interest in being a part of this committee. Just so the public will know out there, Ms. Allard is a principal program advisor for one of our utilities, and she has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for over 11 years. Her reason for wanting to participate in this program is simply because she thought that it would be a lot of fun to get involved and perhaps potentially get her company to become a sponsor. But regardless of that, as I explained to her, we're just looking for people to participate and become part of this organization. So with that, we do recommend that the City Council consider her application.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Plattenson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Boucher, would you please read Item Number Three on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M1312, matter of appointing Douglas Deeds to the Beautification Advisory Committee with a term expiring July 2014.
Is there a motion to approve M13?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by the Mayor Protem, and support by Councilmember Plattenson. Mr. Sessa.
Council, Mr. Deeds also contacted me personally to discuss a committee or a board that he wanted to, to be a member of, and he selected the Beautification Committee. He has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for over 35 years. He is currently retired, and as to expressing his interest and qualifications, he indicated to us that he has a great interest in gardening, and he has raised, I want to say, 4,200 pounds of, I can't read his-
Vegetables.
Vegetables, oh, there you go, at, at the Lasalle Garden. And he felt that that all went to the community, so he's done a lot of work with regards to gardening, and so he was very excited in becoming a member. And one of the things I'd like to do is, is call them, set up a meeting pretty soon because we are getting a significant number of individuals to this committee, so, Council, we are recommending this individual for your consideration.
I noticed Mr. Deeds is here with us this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. As I say, my name is Doug Deeds. I picked up gardening for my mother, and I've done it ever since. And I just, I don't know, I, I won't change the city of Berkeley overnight, but I'll add a new, fresh approach to it, the common person. I mean, everybody likes to see flowers. And hopefully, we'll improve the city of Berkeley, because, you know, the theme that we, we care, and if we can get the Berkeley residents to jump in, then it will improve Berkeley.
Very good. We thank you very much. Question from Mayor Protem.
Another question, just a comment. I want to thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Deeds. You know, we not meet a lot of people, and sometimes they can't make it, and sometimes they can. I know you, you actually moved some things around to be here tonight. I appreciate that, and as a council, we appreciate that. I've known Mr. Deeds for a number of years, and he is certainly a hard worker who is very devoted to giving of his own time to improve areas in the city of Berkeley, whether it be at the, you know, Lasalle, his local parish, and now getting involved on a larger scale. The city of Berkeley is lucky to have somebody who will work as hard as Mr. Deeds will. So I want to thank him for his volunteering to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the appointment of Mr. Deeds?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plattenson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, can you please read Item Number Four on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M1412, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a Berkeley Parks and Recreation Department sponsorship agreement between Telcom Credit Union and the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M1412?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Terbrak.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa.
Council, I'm very pleased to bring this to you for your consideration this evening. We have been working with Telcom for past few years, I know since 2008. We are recommending your consideration of this contract. I, I think perhaps maybe our, our Director of Parks and- And I think perhaps maybe our Director of Parks and Recreation may want to come up and say a little bit about exactly what, what this will do, Mr. Caldwell. And I know also that our city attorney has reviewed this contract and is recommending it as well, Your Honor. Tom, if you don't mind, just simply give us a brief review of some of the sponsorship opportunities that, that thanks to Telcom will be able to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I believe you've seen a contract with Telcom for a number of years now at varying levels. They're a great community partner in a wide variety of areas, especially with the Parks and Recreation Department. The contract that they're looking at for this next year includes some advertisement in the Berkeley Buzz, sponsorship of our summer camps, and then our two new community special events, Winter Fest and Summer Fest. Again, I mean, not only does Telcom help us out financially, but the local branch usually sends volunteers over for some of our special events, and again, they are a great partner to the City of Berkeley.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Caldwell. Very good. Hearing done then. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. fourteen-twelve?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plattenson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, could you please read item number five?
Motion number M. fifteen-twelve, matter of approving amendment to the city fee schedule pertaining to the Department of Public Safety effective April nineteenth, two thousand twelve.
Is there a motion to approve M. fifteen-twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protem Terbrack. Ms. Sessa.
Council, you may recall, this matter was addressed at one of our work sessions on March fifth, two thousand twelve, and we do have with us this evening our Director of Public Safety, Chief Eschman. Chief, if you don't mind, just simply go over some of the recommended fee changes with the City Council, and, Council, we are recommending these items for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. I should note that at this work session, we pointed out we're eliminating two fees as they're no longer relevant, one by law and one technology-wise. That would be gun registration and fingerprint card services. The other three that we're going to increase would be preliminary breath tests called PBTs, tapes, discs, CD, DVDs, the discovery process, or the Freedom of Information Act, recording either nine-one-one calls, dispatcher, or in-car booking area processes. The third area is interim bond processing. PBTs, we're recommending a five-dollar fee. The market on that is in line with what we're recommending, or in the middle, most people, excuse me, most jurisdictions for PBTs charge anywhere from nothing to twenty-five dollars. Only one is at twenty-five dollars. Typically, it's five dollars. In a few cases, it's ten dollars. The median average on that is five dollars, so that's where we're going. The second area, I should add on the PBTs for those who didn't watch or weren't present at the last meeting, preliminary breath tests is ordered through the court normally for drunk-driving convictions, but also for other offenses where alcohol may be involved. It's a side issue. So these are pursuant to court orders, where defendants have to go to a police agency and get a test. So we're recommending five dollars for anyone, whether it's a resident or non-resident, our court or another court. Second area, again, would be the discovery orders or Freedom of Information Act requests for DVDs, CDs. Again, this is all over the map as far as what the market is, anywhere from free to seventy-five dollars. Sometimes it differs between an audio tape and a videotape. We think the current system in many jurisdictions who charge less for an audio tape than they do for videotape can sometimes be misleading. Oftentimes, you have to redact a lot of personal information from an audio tape, such as a nine-one-one call. You do not want certain people to know who called to report the illegal activity. You have to redact that, and oftentimes, you have to somehow defend someone's supposed right to have that information. Sometimes it can become a court battle to provide and not provide that information. So, we feel that going, as most jurisdictions do, with one set fee is the proper way to go. We're recommending twenty-five dollars, which is about six or seven dollars below the mean average and equal amount below the median average. Most jurisdictions would be slightly more. We do, however, have a cost recovery system in place for drunk drivers, the price probably ninety-five, at least ninety-five percent of the requests. We do have other cost recovery apparatus in place which covers a lot of the, the processing. So we feel this is, is in line with what is charged in other jurisdictions. Market value is appropriate, and it's also reasonable, and so we're recommending twenty-five dollars across the board for any type. The third fee that we request to change on is interim bond processing. Again, not to be redundant from the last meeting, but for those who weren't present. An interim bond is simply when we take into custody the defendant who is wanted in another jurisdiction for an offense that is bondable. When we take that person into custody, if the other jurisdiction authorizes it, we will release that person from here as opposed to transferring the person to the other jurisdiction. The bond is then called an interim bond. That bond is collected by the officer here, cash always, then it is forwarded to Finance Treasury Department for deposit. Public Safety Department then processes a request for payment for a check, and the Finance Department will issue a check for that amount to the other court. That check is then sent back to the Public Safety Department, and at that point, we photocopy it, attach it to the report, so we have a paper trail of what happened to the bond money. And then we forward that check to the other jurisdiction. The market on that is zero to ten dollars. Most people, ten dollars. So that's the median average, and so we're just requesting that as a cost recovery for the time taken by not only the Public Safety Department, but also the Finance Department. Those are the three recommendations. Any questions?
Good. Any questions for Chief Eschman? For the sake of our resident, well, Councilmember Plattenson?
She don't have a question for you. It was very well explained, thank you. And we went over it quite a bit during the last, during the work session. Just for our residents out there, we have been reviewing a lot of fee schedules for building, library, police, and what's really happening is, we're getting all of our fees in alignment with what other fees are already out there that are being charged by other municipalities. So, it isn't the city's effort to, you know, boost our revenues by inflating costs, we're just trying to make up the costs that, that we're incurring to provide a lot of these services. So, as we've been looking at those, a lot of the information you provided is very relevant. You're letting us know what other municipalities are charging and keeping us in line with that, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Very well said. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on item M. fifteen-twelve?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plattenson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. sixteen-twelve, matter of directing the City Manager and Finance Director to develop a headly override proposal to be placed on the August seventh, two thousand twelve election ballot.
Is there a motion to approve M. sixteen-twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Terbrack. Ms. Sessa.
Council, what I'd like to do is just simply give you a brief overview of the work session that was held by the City Council on March twelfth. And the purpose of the, of the work session was to, to do several things. The first was to receive a report from, from myself to give the City Council and citizens that were there a status report on the budgetary goals for the city. Each year, the City Council has a set of budgetary goals that administration hopes to achieve. These set of goals are goals that were established, I think this is where in our third year, they're a five-year goal. This is our third year, and I'm pleased to report that we're pretty much on target in terms of the direction that the City Council has given us for these goals. The second portion of our, of our work session was to provide the City Council with a, again, with a brief overview as to how we are doing with regards to our revenues, those revenues that help us to, to pay our expenses for the City of Berkeley, and to identify any concerns that, that we may have with the City Council. I think many of the concerns were, were addressed by our State Representative, Colin Lipton, this evening, in terms of, of how cities are, are managed, and as you heard in her report, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. But after receiving that report, the City Council directed us to begin pursuing this matter. But the first item they'd like for us to do is to consider developing, so ask the City Council to begin developing a citizens advisory group to study this, this issue. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to, to our mayor to begin that discussion. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Sessa. The first step in the conversation regarding the future and the finances of the city should begin with bringing together a citizens advisory committee. Purpose of that committee is for members of our community, stakeholders in our, in our city, to come together and spend some time understanding the financial picture that we have today, and offering us some guidance in how we should go forward. My suggestion to the council is this, that each member of council nominate two people from the community. You are all representatives of the community. So if each of you would, in the next few days to, to a week, nominate two people that you think would be able to make a good contribution to understanding the financial dynamics of the city in the context of the state budget and the cuts and constraints that have occurred. And, and I will nominate three. And, and the reason for that is to have an uneven number. So then we would have fifteen people that could study it. The City Manager and the Finance Director will be available to them to present the information, the budgetary information, and, and help them understand, I think, what all of you have been working on for the period of the last, for, for many years, for some of us. And so then, they will be able to give some sense of guidance to what should be next. First of all, is there any objection to bringing that committee together in that fashion?
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. So, so that'll be our first move forward. Now, are there any other issues related to that? Are any comments or thoughts that anyone would want to add? Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do appreciate the opportunity for us to, to engage the public in such an important discussion here. I think it's a, it's a wise move. I like the idea. In that spirit of transparency, I guess I had two questions and a comment.
Yeah.
The first, and just real quickly, the questions are the availability of the information on the city's website. I know in the past that we've had, and I think it's still there, a budget blog, and if it's not already been updated, I would encourage us to, to continue to use that as one mechanism for outreach. The second piece was, you know, the nature of the conversations that this committee would have, I would assume, but I certainly want to ask, it'd be an open forum so that the public could attend, in addition to the fifteen and, and represent, representation from staff on that. So, before I have a little quick comment, is that something we could-
Yes.
-talk about for a second? Thank you.
Right. Obviously, all those meetings are subject to the Public Meetings Act, and therefore, anybody can attend, and we would encourage as many people as feel that they would like to participate and contribute to the discussions, to be part of that. It is very important that our community calmly and quietly understand the financial situation and develop strategies going forward to deal with them. So, public meetings are public meetings and available to the public. And television, when, we'll also provide the, or the internet, we'll also provide, we have the dashboard on the internet, plus we have the budget available to everybody. Jane, do you have any additional?
Yes, sir. I was, was working with the staff this afternoon, and we're going to make the, many, much of the information, or if not all of the information that we presented to the City Council at a work session, we'll, we'll also make it available on our website as well. Some of the charts perhaps may require some explanation, so I'm, I'm looking at that, maybe perhaps working with our Finance Director for maybe perhaps a little more simpler type of explanation. SEVs, you know, things that, words like that, I'm sure some of the residents may not exactly understand that. Taxable value, all that, you know, what does that mean? I know these are words that you all hear, but we want to make sure that when we put this information out to the public, that they'll understand and they'll get it clear. That's something that the Finance Director and I will, will work on. And then, of course, we'd like to, for everybody to, to take a look at, at the status of our, of our budgetary goals. As I mentioned earlier, we are just about to finish the third year. It is, is five years that the City Council has directed us to, to complete, and, and I'd like to put that out as well, so the, so the public can see. Thank you, Your Honor.
Good. Councilmember Stedman?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, there's, there's a timeline here.
Yes.
What is the date that we have to file for being put on the ballot?
I, I think what we want to do is take them step by step. We want to focus on-
There is, there's a deadline.
There are deadlines. There are always deadlines going forward.
Like May fifteenth?
And, but there will be sufficient time. I think that's the urgency of getting the committee together quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So that they will have adequate time to come up with appropriate and wise suggestions so that we can then-
That was, that was my point.
Yeah.
That this committee really has to be set in motion within the next week or two.
Yes.
And then they will have a fairly quick sunset.
That's right.
Where they will have to come back with their findings.
Exactly.
And then, immediately after that, we will have to be looking for another group of people. Should this be on the ballot in August to, to campaign for it?
Then, that will be an additional thought.
There's something you just, my, my fellow colleague mentioned, that the timeline and if there's a sense of urgency. That sense of urgency and, and any deadlines will, you know, sort of be decided by the citizens group.
Yeah.
That's why we're, we're having one. We're not just convening a citizens group to convene a citizens group, knowing that we want to blast through this anyway. That, that's not the case here. It's very important that we have the input of the residents on something like this. Now, I, I just want to backtrack a little bit, just to briefly give our residents an idea, why, why are we here? How did we get here, and why is this something that we're discussing now? And over the past, well, at least the past four years that I've been on council, especially since two thousand nine, we've been losing money left and right. The SEV, and I'm, again, I don't want to get into all that, but, but, you know, houses are not worth as much, taxes are down. The City of Berkeley, unlike just about every one of our neighboring cities, has not yet gone for any sort of millage. And the reason is that through decisions by this board, this body, and our Finance Director and our City Manager, we've been able to make cuts in our budget and to plan financially so that we would not get to a point where we were needing emergency mellages or getting in the RED or Emergency Financial Manager, any of that. So, you know, year after year, when we say, yeah, we're in good shape, we were in good shape, but we were making deep cuts that nobody, none of the residents saw. Our unions took massive cuts, or concessions, I should say, in the last negotiating. Those are things that the residents don't see, but they do, and we know that. We've cut a ton of our departments, cut to the bone where we can't cut anymore without losing services that you will notice. You wouldn't be, you know, your snow wouldn't be removed as quickly. You wouldn't be able to put your, rake your leaves out to the lawn, or to the street, to the curb anymore to be picked up. Those are things that we are now looking at losing if we can't do something to, to kind of ease our budget constraints. I, I just think it's important for the residents to know that we've all worked as hard as we can in the city. We don't want to lose anything in the city. Berkeley's a great place to live because we have top-notch services, we have a great community feel, and we want to make sure that that continues, and that's why we need to study this, a potential millage, and see what the- And that's why we need to study this, a potential millage, and see what the residents think. If the residents, you know, are 100% against us, then we're not going to do it. But we want to get the residents' opinions, and that's why we are. It is important. We heard from Ellen Colton Lipton today, you know, what is happening with our budget, what we may lose. Hopefully, she had some good news for us today as it relates to the PPT and hopefully EVIP. But those are small pieces of our budget. And as Mr. Subuta will tell you, you know, the biggest thing that we need to look for is our property tax and our home values. And our home values will only go down if we lose services.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadek.
Mayor Protem said a lot of what I was going to say, but, thank you, Mr. Mayor, by the way. Something you and I sat on together along with Mr. Brewer many years ago was the Citizens Committee, and a lot of good things came out of that. At that time, we had lost the publication, and someone said, well, we need something to communicate to the people. Thus, the Berkeley Buzz was created. So good things come out of these committees. I encourage people that are really interested to get involved, to let any one of the seven of us know, or administration, if they want to get involved, because I think it would be a plus to have, you know, more people at these meetings. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just to piggyback and not repeat, one of the things that people typically ask about and the focus is on is what we call essential services. And what we find when we're out talking to residents is, that means something completely different to each and every person. And I think that the key to a committee like this, made up of our residents, is it allows us to hear directly from them what does essential mean to them, and how do we need to prioritize the budget so that when we are facing, you know, shifting numbers around, we look at projects such as the discussion we had last year on Tot Lot, how do we pick and choose what gets done in a way that is meaningful to our residents? So, I think it's a great idea.
Very good. Councilmember Blanchard?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. One of the things I think people are confused about is the, we talk about the Headley. And for those of you that are aware, when values of your home goes up, Headley lowers the millage rate and keeps the stream of money coming into the city the same. Unfortunately, when the values go down, there's nothing that reverses that. We don't get to take that millage back. And so, we're suffering, and we are on a downhill right now. And as you've seen in some of the other local communities, they've been on downhill pretty steep and basically crashed. Our goal is to make sure that that doesn't happen in our community, to make sure that we cushion this, to make sure that it works out the way it is, to keep the services. We're not going for a bunch of things that we really want. We're going for things that we need to make this city function the way you, the residents, want it to function. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, just to kind of echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues here, in conversations that I've had over the last several years with residents and with business owners and things like that, they've asked, we read about all these other municipalities in the papers. We'll read about Cities A and B and C, and how is it that they're passing or proposing mellages and reaching out to the voters. What's up with Berkeley? How come you haven't done that yet? And I've, much has been already mentioned about that with the hard work and the cuts and the sacrifices that have been made on the inside. And the way I've kind of framed that is like, much like the classical magicians will reach into the hat and pull out a rabbit and say, "Alakazam!", or something like that. And then, every year, we'd be able to pull a rabbit out of the hat to kind of get us out of a jam. And this year, we're looking in that hat, and there's nothing left. There's no more rabbits in that hat for us to pull from. And whether that was a good strategy or not, in the past, to keep, you know, kind of, as was pointed out, kind of keeping silent about it and just buckling it up, all that much more every year, you know, you could argue whether that was a good strategy or not. But I'm very proud of the work that we have done. So as I look to the future, I think about the quality of life that we have here, right? The sense of place that we have. We heard earlier today from some of the volunteers that have been recognized for all that they do for the city, they said it best, you know, "We love Berkeley." And I know that all of us here today, and hopefully everybody that's watching and paying attention to this, loves the city as well. When we think about this sense of place and this challenge that we face as an opportunity, I think the Citizens Committee is going to be a great way to help bring people together, to listen, to share, to understand. And as a community, encouraging us to say, what do we want Berkeley to be? What kind of community do we want to live in? Do we want a city that positions us for the immediate challenges? Do we want to position us for the future? What kinds of livelihood and qualities of life do we want for ourselves and for our children, for our visitors, for the folks choosing a place to live and raise their families and set up a business? And I look forward to this. It's tough sometimes, you know, they say, this glass of water, it's, you know, is it three-quarters empty or a quarter full? And it's tough sometimes to come up with a positive response to a question like that. And these are the times that we find ourselves in, and I'd encourage us all to just dig a little deeper into the bottom of the felt of that hat, and maybe we will find a little rabbit in there, who knows? But we'll see what we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments on this topic? Very good. I appreciate the insight, the passion, and the vision of my colleagues here on the Council in moving forward with this. And in advance, I'd like to thank those people who will be called to volunteer their time to study this very important topic. On that then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on item M1512? M1612.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, we come to the communications portion of the meeting, and I believe Councilmember Kadek is first up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say hat off to everyone that planned, participated, and visited the Home Expo this weekend. It was very good. We had St. Patrick's Day, of course, and we had sunny days, but, you know, just everyone that got involved with that, I want to thank them. Mr. Nicolai, I'm glad you're still here. That old Dwyer cup, it's not going to be green, is it? And Cruze Fest, I'm glad to see that we have another member on the Cruze Fest ad hoc committee. And we have another meeting on April 4th, so I'll keep reporting as to what's happening there. And then tomorrow, I'm attending my first Capitol Conference. I know some of my colleagues will be joining me on Wednesday, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson?
Couple of things this evening. First, from the Tree Board, you're all familiar with the fall tree planting program. This year, they're actually able to do a spring tree planting program, which is great because if you've been driving around the city, you realize they have gone through and taken down all of the dead trees. And we lost many, many trees over the last month or so. So, the details on that are that you can contact the Director of Public Works, place your order by April 20th, and there's actually quite a list of trees available. They are $55 if you're planting them in the easement. They are $65 if you're planting them on your personal property. If you're having it planted in the easement, it is free if you want the contractor to plant it on your property. I believe there's a fee for that. And it's a great program. If you've gone out and priced a tree, these are amazing values. There's some great options, including small trees, trees that get a little bit of large, a little larger, things that have great fall color, which is always nice when we're out walking around. So, by April 20th, contact DPW either by going into the office or giving them a call And then a little update from the Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership. We had our first meeting, and we have actually another meeting coming up this week. And one of the things that we did in that first session was sort of took the pulse of the community and identified some areas that we all thought had room for improvement. And I just wanted to share a couple of the things that came out of that. One is having access to sustainable transportation options. Surprise, surprise, that came up as an area for improvement. Another was conserving energy, making sure our municipalities are energy efficient and using alternative fuels. Those were the two big ones. And then also, the community being physically healthy. And we all know that the ideas of complete streets, walking and biking, and having all of that accessible in a non-car sort of way obviously contributes to that, as well as things like how pollution contributes to asthma and other illnesses. And then finally, an area for improvement included being more business-friendly and proactive about economic development, so looking to diversify our tax base and draw in the types of businesses that we would want to be able to bike and walk to. So those were some of the findings there. We will be breaking up into subcommittees to work more, in a more focused way, on some of these issues, and we'll be actually coming up with a plan and a prioritization over the next few meetings. And then, an important point for that is there is a Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership Open House next Tuesday, March 27th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. You'll get an overview of the project. There's an open house for public input, and then we'll be able to give a little update on next steps. So, if you have any thoughts on how to make your community more sustainable, if you have any questions about the project itself, please come out next Tuesday, March 27th, 6:30 to 8:30, Pleasant Ridge Community Center. And that's all for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Nicolai mentioned earlier, again, the Hockey Day in Berkeley with a full slate of activities on the ice coming up March 24th. As a hockey fan, I'm certainly looking forward to that, and I expect to see our mayor skating around the ice.
I'll get that.
I was trying to get something out of him on TV, but he, you know, nothing, nothing. Aside from that, the following week, March 31st, we mentioned, you know, Cindy Coon and Sue Rinaldi this morning, and some of the events that they got kick-started here with the Parks and Recreation, the junior women's. One of those was the Breakfast with the Bunny, and yes, we are still doing that. Again, March 31st, we have two different sessions. There's a 9 to 10 session and a 10:30 to 11:30 session. It's for children, three years, more, slightly younger if they're okay, up through 5th grade. It is at the community center. It is $4 per person, which includes adults, and that covers your admission and your breakfast ticket, which you need to get in. All the children are going to get their picture taken with the bunny. Everybody will certainly have their pictures taken, but space is limited, and these two sessions typically sell out relatively quickly. The deadline to register is March 28th, so Thursday, March 28th, so that's coming up. Again, don't waste any time. Make sure that you are signed up, registered. Your children will certainly love this event. And as a special bonus, there are live chicks and bunnies. So, live chicks and bunnies too. So, fantastic. Again, that is March 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few quick updates. The city's Downtown Development Authority, DDA, their board met last week's Wednesday in the morning. One of the principal conversations was around the 12 Mile and Coolidge intersection. As you know, it's currently a brick intersection, and we've, it's fair to say we've had a few issues with the installation and the quality of the bricks. And so, we're moving forward with receiving bids and looking forward to that. Conversation will include the timing of when we might do such a project, if we are able to proceed with that endeavor. Some of the things that we're considering, obviously, is the, there's the Art Bash on 12 Mile, which is a popular event, and then also the Cruze Fest event also takes advantage of that thoroughfare there. So we're looking to try to find a way to get this repair done and not interrupt either of those or any of the other kinds of significant events we have across the city. Earlier, we mentioned about the transit kinds of things, and as you know, Berkeley's also been engaged here within the city and across the region in helping to raise awareness about transit issues and the opportunities that it can provide. And I thought it might be helpful to try to make it a little more tangible in terms of some of the benefits that we as residents and homeowners and business owners and municipalities and regions can see in having transit. And the thing I was looking to talk about just lightly was on property values, but given the gas prices, I thought that might be something interesting too to cover someday about protection from the fluctuations in gas prices. But as far as property values go, one of the many benefits that a regional transit system offers is desirability. We talked about the sense of place a little bit ago, and having access to transits is deemed to be quite desirable. There've been studies from across the country and around the world, in fact, that look at different kinds of systems, from light rail to bus rapid transit to enhanced traditional bus service, and the impact or benefits of such services on property values. And as you probably aren't too surprised, it varies all over the place based on a wide variety of circumstances, but they all signs are positive on property values. So for instance, some of the ranges anywhere from 2% increase in property value relative to homes that are further away from a transit station, upwards of 20% in some communities. A few specific examples, in San Diego, 2% increase for those homes that are less than 200 feet away from a transit stop. In St. Louis, they saw a 32% increase in property values for those homes that are within 100 feet of a station. So, it really does vary, but they all point to positive signs. So for those who are near the potential transit corridors, it's one of the things that we can look at. And so, we'll have more updates about additional benefits as well, but I thought that'd be an interesting thing, as we talked about, the income and values and things like that. And finally, in speaking of sense of place and the quality of life, it was Thomas Edison who once said, "Opportunity is missed by most people because it is dressed in overalls and it looks like work." Opportunity is missed by most people because it is dressed in overalls and it looks like work. And I like to emphasize opportunity and work in that for just a moment. Here in Berkeley, we've been very fortunate to see growth in businesses along 12 Mile and along Coolidge. There are many fine establishments that we can visit and purchase goods and make new friends and things like that, and we continue to celebrate and welcome those to join our community. There's another kind of business that we don't notice quite as often, because they don't necessarily have doors that are open to the public, but yet they've chosen communities like ours to be their homes, and they add a new flavor or dimension of professionalism and entrepreneurship and sense of opportunity here that Berkeley has to offer. And so, with that, I'd just like to take the opportunity to welcome a company called LeverX, L-E-V-E-R-X, LeverX, recently chose Berkeley to be their home. They are a technology consulting firm. They're actually international, and they're looking to, they're headquartered out in the West Coast, and they have offices overseas. They provide technology implementation and planning work around like SAP, which are some big-time computer systems. And as they were looking to establish something here on this side of the country, they chose Berkeley as their home for their regional offices. And so, we're very thrilled to have them. They're on Coolidge, just south of 12 Mile. And when I think of the kinds of, you know, that's the kind of growth that we like to see as well, because there's going to be employees that are working there, and they'll need a place to grab a sandwich so they can go to the shops around the way, they can get their gas there, buy their greeting cards and presents right around there. So it's that kind of thing too that I continue to celebrate. Now, what I can guarantee is that the people in LeverX dress in overalls, but if they do, you'll know how to pick them out of a crowd. So with that, just wanted to thank them and for all the other businesses that we may not be able to see as we're walking along Coolidge. They may not have a sale that you can go in and tangibly take advantage of, but I think folks like LeverX and many other companies continue to add to the character and the quality of what we have going on here. And I want to thank them and welcome them and encourage others to choose Berkeley as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Blanchard?
I'd just like to echo Councilmember Kadek's comments on the home show. Although attendance was down a little bit, we had a lot of competition with the weather and the holiday, but a lot of interesting vendors there. I spent some time there myself, and I think it was well worth it. and I think it was well worth it, we need to get the people that live in Berkeley to fix up their homes and stay here. We need to tax dollars. Also, I've been working with the Chamber of Commerce to get them to appoint somebody to the Woodward Dream Cruise Ad hoc Committee, because there's a slot open there, and we've sent an email out, which they're going to send out to their members and hopefully get a consensus on somebody that will join us on that committee, and we'll get somebody a nomination proposal shortly, so.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Sessom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments myself. I too wish to thank everybody who worked on the Home Expo show, thank you so much. In particular, I'd like to recognize our city planner, Amy Vanson, and Randy Travis from the school, they did an incredible job, and I thank them. You know, on Saturdays, I attended the Home Expo a little bit late, because I know, you know, the morning crowd gets there really early and they're anxious to, you know, to get their work done, and the afternoon crowd gets a little bit slow. But after the Home Expo, I walked around Berkeley and visited some of the communities, or some of the businesses, and it was really interesting to see a lot of people walking our streets, all dressed in green, having a lot of fun. So, I thought that was excellent, and I hope we get to see more and more of that. I'd like to thank Councilperson Platt Onson to remind us about the Sustainability Partnership Program. It is on our website at www.berkleymish.org, so if you'd like some specific details, please, everyone, go to our website, and you'll be able to get information, not just about this, but also many of the other meetings that the City Council mentioned. And lastly, I too am anxious to meet with LeverX, I know that the mayor and Councilman Baker, myself, will be meeting with them soon, and I'm very excited about this company. Obviously, this is not a company that you'll see where there'll be open doors and things of that nature, as you were saying, but they certainly have a major impact on businesses today, and I'm just very excited and very thrilled that they selected the city of Berkeley. So, with that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Subouda?
Thank you, Your Honor, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Otten?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Very good. Well, I would like to join my colleagues in thanking everybody for the Home Expo and the work they've done. The whole effort at improving our homes is an important, ongoing task. It contributes as well to the quality of our community, keeping our housing stock up is a very important thing. With regard to our earlier conversations regarding the advisory committee that we are going to empanel, their work is going to be very important to the future of our city. Mayor Stefan used to always remind us that our marching orders must always be what is best for Berkeley, and if I were to give a charge to that committee, it is the same. What is best for Berkeley needs to be our goal as we go forward. These are difficult times for some of our residents as well, and yet, those of us charged with managing our community finances must still operate from the framework of the common good, what is best for Berkeley. And so, on that note, then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
The March 19th, 2012 meeting of the council has been adjourned.